Council members to the bench. All right, good evening and welcome to the April second twenty twenty five council meeting. It is seven thirty P M. City of Sunbury. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mayor Saint John?
Here.
Mister Capel?
Here.
Mr. Ghost?
Here.
Mister Grumney?
Here.
Mister Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
Seven present, we have quorum.
We had a March nineteenth meeting on twenty twenty five, looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So.
Motion by Ms. Drayer and a second by Mister Grumney. Discussion. Call call.
Mister Air?
Yes.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghosts?
Uh, yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Seven years, minutes passed.
On March twenty second, we had a meeting. It was a special meeting, council retreat, AKA the offsite, looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mister Martin, second, second by Damon Capel, discussion, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Mister Capel?
Yes.
Mister Air?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mister Ghosts?
I'm staying.
Mister Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
She has minutes passed.
All right, we're under the visitor's section. I'm going to hand this uh to Mrs. Cindy Cooper.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to invite Mister Owen up to our podium, please. This portion of our meeting, we're going to be presenting Mister Owen with a certificate of recognition for the city, from the city of Sunbury, and I would just like to read this to you and for the record. Warren Owen has been a devoted resident of Sunbury, Ohio for seventy years, generously dedicating his time and energy to service and volunteerism that have been positively impacted both the Sunbury and Big Walnut communities. For over twenty years, Warren has served as a board member of the Sunbury Lions Club, helping to organize such events as the Ox Roast Labor Flea Market, Labor Day Flea Market, which raised funds for local needs. He played a hands-on role in preparing the ox roe sandwiches, working through the night to keep the fires burning for events that ran rain or shine. In addition to his Lions Club service, Warren has volunteered for over a decade with the Sunbury Halter and Saddle Club and the American Legion Post four fifty seven. He has also supported the Eastern Delaware Legion in identifying and marketing veterans grave site, marking veterans grave sites for Veterans Day. Warren is a member and past trustee of the Big Walnut Conservation Club, where he has helped maintain the grounds for trap and skeet shoots and fishing derbies for local youth. He is a lifetime member of the Myers Inn and cares for the gardens there, further contributing to the charm and the beauty of our community. For the past ten years, Warren has also served as a member of the Tree and Landscape Commission. Warren regularly attends our city council meetings where he offers thoughtful input on community issues with the goal of improving and making Sunbury a safer and better place. His deep dedication and care for the community make him a truly deserving recipient of the Citizen Recognition Award. Thank you.
I want to thank you all.
Give you a certificate here, Mister Owen.
Hey.
And you'll have a cup for you. Yeah, we're here with Mayor Saint John first, then we'll do a picture with him and then a picture with council. They also have discussion rooms.
That's the council. Yeah, see?
Yeah, really. I don't think so either. Yeah, really. I'm telling you what if we don't have a picture. All right, so so Warren, don't don't leave quite yet. We did want maybe Molly to say a word or two. She actually nominated you. She wanted to say a word.
I just want to say. I just want to say, listen, if it weren't for people like you, really, to help out with all these organizations, Sunbury wouldn't be near the place that it is today, really, and to be able to provide the youth with all these different opportunities, really. It it takes a lot of time and it's deeply appreciated.
All for everybody else who's been going over the years. It adds up. You see the results, the end results. I'm glad these people reach out with what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren.
Onto the visitor's section. It's open to the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak with the city council? Sure, if you don't mind introducing yourself, we'll try to limit it to three minutes if you don't mind. Okay.
Uh, my name is Bob Platt. Uh, I live at seventy-four and seventy-eight St. Eric Street. And I appreciate that council allowing me to voice some of my concern, a little nervous because I'm not a a public speaker. Uh, as you can see by the map that I have here, um, the I live here in seventy-four and seventy-eight. And recently, the the village has uh taken two of my spaces and cordoned them all with paint lines on the street. So my customers found no place to park. Um, what I can't understand is we have two parking spots down here for companies that have their own parking in back and on the side. Uh, according to the, what used to be uh here in in on Cherry Street, these curves used to be painted yellow and there was no parking here. The paint is now worn off. Uh, we have people parking there uh when we have large uh things going on on the square, large events. And I'm constantly sitting on my porch telling people, no, you can't park there, no, you can't park there, no, you can't park there. And it seems a little ridiculous. Uh, getting back to my problem, they have put lines here in front of my house and in reality, if I park my Yukon here, I still have eight feet, which is plenty of room for somebody to to drive by. These lines should have been put up here in front of my house. That's where the actual curve has an effect on traffic. We get semis coming in here trying to make this curve. And since these curves are not painted yellow, these people have no idea, so they park there. And then I have to listen to horns blowing and people cussing at each other out and so on and so forth. I don't think whoever has the traffic situation in hand thought this through. And I would appreciate the council to look through this or look into this or do more than look into it. I'd like them to change it so my customers have someplace to park. I have no parking back here in the back of my house because I park back there. And the people in the apartments, they all each have a vehicle and they park back there. So we're short on parking there.
So that that's been three minutes, Mayor. So okay, just if you could wrap it up. Yep, Mister. Oh, yeah.
I thought I had five minutes.
No, three minutes.
Three? I'm sorry. Anyway, if you could look into it, I would certainly appreciate it.
Certainly.
Uh, or do more.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Um.
And I'm going to leave this with you because as I understand it from one of your constituents, that you guys are all getting my age and you're all getting forgetful.
Very much. I I'm gonna hold this for the whole meeting. I'm not.
So you want your parking spaces back is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
You want your parking spaces back?
Is this the first notice, Mister Platt, that we have?
I'm sorry?
Is this the first notice that we have, the city of your issue?
Uh, no, actually, the guys that were painting the line, well, as far as the, as far as your, the council is concerned, yes. The guys that were painting the lines, I talked to them for quite a while, uh, and expressed my concerns, uh, you know, and they said that they would talk to their supervisor about it. Uh, also, uh, while I'm thinking about it, I'm sorry if I'm running over three minutes, but the man across the street has four panels of sidewalk that is falling apart and brittle. And he is afraid somebody's going to walk up through there and twist an ankle and I, who's legally responsible, that's not my doubt. Uh, but somebody is going to probably get in a lawsuit there. So you need, you got four panels of sidewalk there. Other than that, all sidewalks, all the way up or just one.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna direct Mister Hennessy to get, can we get Mister Platt's contact information, please? And uh, somebody on his team is gonna reach out to you about this. Thank you.
And I have talked before.
Okay, good deal. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, any other uh, community members would like to speak? You don't have to be a community member. It can be anybody. All right, thank you. We are on the committee reports. Mister Air?
I have a small report from the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. It's their it's for last year. I thought I would read to us their mission statement. The Delaware County Regional Planning Commission was established to provide growth, management systems, planning services, and general information to all governmental entities in Delaware County, Ohio relating to land use, planning, and coordination of activities of regional significance. So that is their mission statement. I think they went through and uh listed some of the representatives. If you don't know, some of the participating members of the Regional Planning Commission are the county commissioners, the county engineer, the Board of Health, the sanitary engineer department, and code compliance. The public can look up zoning information, uh, information, historical features, economic features, tract subdivisions. All you have to go to is D C R P C dot org. And go to the map center, then you can get a lot of your questions answered. Just some numbers. Total Delaware County population as of the start of twenty twenty five is two hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred eighty-seven. Our growth rate from four, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three is eight point two percent. Projections, twenty twenty-five population, two fifty, two thirty-eight. Twenty thirty will be two hundred seventy-four thousand, twenty thirty-five, two hundred ninety-one thousand, twenty forty, three hundred and six thousand. It is the fastest growing county in Ohio between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three. These are just some interesting numbers and that I I think is valid to what the growth that we're seeing. And our building permits for Sunbury actually were up more last year, twenty twenty-three at four thirty-four, twenty twenty-four, they were at three seventy-eight. Twenty thirteen, they were at seventy-three, twenty fourteen, they were at thirty-six. That's how much we are expanding. And some of the building permit trends for larger municipalities, Sunbury was uh at twenty twenty-four up to around fourteen hundred compared to twenty seventeen, they were around five hundred. So these are just some interesting statistics for our area. And that is what the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission does. They supervise a lot of the growing and zoning. It's it's interesting, really. It's our backyard and this is what's going on around us, so. That's what I have.
Thank you, Mister Air. Mister Gummy?
All right. Well, uh, we had a jam-packed services committee meeting uh earlier this evening. Um, first thing, um, on our agenda tonight, uh, we have contractor selection for Cheshire Lift Station, so I won't get too into that. Um, we had a brief presentation by Scott Stevens from the Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District, so uh, basically, uh, presented a little bit on what uh, on what they're already providing us, but we have in a future council meeting uh, coming at us, uh, a draft of a contract to potentially expand those services. Uh, most interestingly, to potentially assist as a third party, um, inspector uh, for uh, our storm zero runoff uh with new construction. So uh, they may be able to help us out uh with that. As we know, we just passed stormwater legislation not too long ago, so uh, very relevant, uh, potential benefit of that partnership. Uh, then Bob Keterly presented on uh, potential signal, uh, traffic signal modernization uh, strategies. Uh, we have some aging infrastructure, uh, and he presented on some uh, interesting ideas up to and including uh, involving A I in smart uh, smart technology that would learn the traffic patterns and help us uh, control. Uh, nothing major on that yet, but we were uh, generally in agreement that it's something that we want to look at moving forward. Um, we reviewed the Otis Street parking situation. Uh, long story short, there, uh, staff has recommended that Harrison to Cedric uh, become a no parking zone uh, down Otis Street uh, for sake of um, safety. There's no sidewalk through that entire corridor. Um, and there's also plenty of uh off-street parking uh, for all the residents on that street as well. Um, and then uh, we also got news that the wastewater treatment plant uh, financing's been approved, uh, going to schedule pre-construction meeting next. Uh, contract has been signed with Simonson uh, for that work. And then um, we're also moving forward on the twenty twenty-five street program uh, designed to be submitted by the end of the month, looking to go out to bid next month. Um, we're gonna roll in the Columbus Street parking lot. We had kind of a lackluster um, turnout of uh, bids on that project, so we're hoping to be a little better pricing uh, on it by rolling it in with the street program. Uh, and then we're going to tackle crack ceiling again this year. Uh, Jake's team is going to shoot for double the mileage from what they did last year with crack ceiling program.
Cooper?
Yes, I have two. We had an events committee meeting on March twentieth. And we are gonna continue to discuss a meeting time change. Nothing has changed yet. We are looking at maybe changing it over the summer. We've also added the Fourth of July and says, well, as a standing um item on our agenda, and Mister Hennessy informed us that we have a Fourth of July working group that includes all of our emergency services and um our services department and I believe a resident in our staff. So um, one thing that they've discussed about the Fourth of July is uh, potentially changing the Fourth of July uh, parade route. That will not happen this year. This year, um, that's just something that they're talking about. It will not happen this year. The parade route for this year is going to be, remain the same as that that is always been. It's just something they're considering for the future. Um, we also talked about the movies on the square, which I brought to your attention last time, and the Memorial Day Market, which leads me to our parks meeting because the Memorial Day Market folks were able to make it to this meeting. And uh, that'll obviously be on Memorial Day. We also talked about the in the parks meeting, we talked about the Jackson Preston Memorial Fishing Derby, which I've brought to your attention before. That's been through the events committee. And something new is um, we discussed an Eagle Scout, uh, which we get Eagle Scouts from time to time that want to do projects, and this one wants to do a beautification project in the Evening Street Park, and he's got a lot of work um, that he wants to do, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, and we also talked about that math walk that I brought up that they want to do over in the forest of G R E, and they have three what are they, stands? Three stands um, that they have gotten funded, and they're going to partner with the city for their service day, and they're gonna put in three stands, they're gonna try to get more funded, but they got three and they're they're partnering with Jake and the city, and the kids are gonna put those stands up um, on their middle school day, service day. So that's about it for the two of those meetings.
Right, thank you.
Nothing this evening.
Mister Ghosts?
No, nothing, sir.
All right, we had a a zoning meeting. It was on the twenty-fourth. Um, one thing to note, we swore in Mark Long for a new term. Uh, we hadn't had a meeting for the past couple of months, so this was his first opportunity to be sworn in. And the two items of note that uh, were both tied together, there was a conditional use uh, application that was approved and a preliminary plat. This is for commercial property that is at the intersection of Cheshire and Cherry. Uh, if you think of that triangle parcel in between um, Kintner Parkway, uh, there's a roadway realignment and a uh, travel, traffic signal change, and they're looking to change Cheshire Road into a one-way out um, to fix that problematic intersection, but those were both approved. All right, we are on to the police report. Chief Rob Howard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
First item on there that I I wanted to cover was we had, uh, end of last week, we had an incident on the bike path that we drew a lot of attention. Um, there was a Delaware County deputy was just outside of Galena on Vance Valley Road. He rolled up to serve some civil papers and rolled up to an act of domestic. The uh, as he tried to separate the two, the female ended up jumping on his back. He was trying to take a weapon from the male who didn't hop on a bike and fled. Ended up on the bike path and came into Sunbury. There was a few people on the bike path that were not really sure what to think, but all the cruisers and A T Vs and we had to drone up and but we ended up, we caught the guy on the bike path, um, actually right here at South Columbus Street. So if any, I made sure I let the mayor know, um, and Daryl know, in case, I don't know if he has any calls or not, but that was uh, that's what that was about. I know people were wondering why we had cruisers out there, so. Uh, we got a few items that are still outstanding on the new building uh, on the punch list that we were told would have been taken care of by now. We reached out to uh, Settling. They were supposed to get back with us this week to let us know what those uh issues were gonna take to get resolved. Haven't heard back from them yet. Uh, Sunbury Eagles, they reached out to us. Um, they want to know what they can do to help us with the new cars or they, that's uh, they said they they'll do whatever we need. So I told them we'd put a wish list together and let them pick what they'd like to help with. So we appreciate them throwing that offer out. And then the last, as I reported before, was the cruiser repair. There was a a little extra expense with this one when we tore it down. Uh, the valves had to be ground and the heads planed and but we should have that car back tomorrow. Last thing I want to bring up that is not on the report was uh, Jake has reached out to us about checking the reservoir with the drone. And we've been over there flying a couple of times, checking the progress of Walnut Street, whether doing that stuff, it's just kind of documented. And there's been a couple of people, one, one individual uh, in particular, who is very upset that that drone goes up in the air. Um, I just want everybody to know that we're not spying on you. We're not in your backyard looking to see what you're doing, so. Um, don't panic. We're we're looking at the reservoir and the progress on Walnut Street.
Is that person a homeowner?
He's a homeowner. Um, he was very upset. Uh, told us that, you know, next time we put the drone up, he was gonna shoot it down and so just, I wanted to bring that to your attention in case that does turn into something. You guys know that.
Were we flying over his property?
We were actually over the reservoirs.
Yeah, I mean, it was public property, right?
Public property, we were. I think at that time, the drone was like three hundred and sixty-seven feet in the air.
Um, that's pretty significant.
Yeah, I I honestly don't even know how he seen it, heard it. He had to watch it take off and then thought we were spying on him or something, but.
How often does that happen? Or is it, how often has that happened? Have have you had it over there?
Uh, that was the first time it went up there.
Just once?
Yep.
Good.
And and he was, he was over, it was Officer Alexander and Jake, and uh, this guy was over and on him about that drone within three minutes. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Questions? Any questions for Chief?
No, sir.
All right, Mister Hennessy, the administrator report.
All right, so uh, in the report, we've got uh, we've got some data from our public uh, service team. Just one thing Jake is trying to do is document in a more um, you know, um, I don't know, a more precise way uh, the work that his team is doing. So uh, for this last snow season, between the months of November twenty through February twenty, they went out to for twenty-four snow and ice events. Doesn't mean that it was a major event, but I mean, they were deployed, at least part of the staff, to do something related to that. So that's a pretty significant number uh, and over four thousand six hundred miles of of service. So that's a lot of times around the city. Uh, when you've got, when you've got forty lane miles in the city, that's that's a lot of times around the city. So one other thing that he has gotten for us, it's in your packet as well, is the amount of uh, uh, salt uh, used. It's in the uh, the ODOT um, resolution there. A little over, I think, six hundred, six to seven hundred tons of salt this year, obviously a high watermark for at least the last five years. Uh, the median usage is somewhere in the three hundred ton range, so. So it was a busy year for the team. Uh, they've also been out to mark almost four thousand uh, oops tickets. Uh, so in addition to their marking of oops tickets, we also have the wastewater team do the same thing as well. So that's a time-consuming exercise, but it's important in terms of protecting the city's uh, assets, so. We do have in the packet uh, summer seasonal hiring, so if you know somebody who might be interested in a summer position with our service team, the uh, the details regarding the position are in your packet, and you can just hand that to somebody. Um, the joint recreation district is going to meet uh, tomorrow night, right here in the council chambers at six o'clock.
I'm assuming you mean the eastern and not Easter.
We do mean the eastern.
Okay.
Noting that.
This is season, Dave.
This is the season, that's right. Um, it it also says April sixth, so it's April third, just to make a
Egg toss.
Yes, exactly. But two other things quickly. One is um, you you we're watching the weather pretty closely. There's gonna be some significant rain over the course of the next three or four days. Uh, you know, we've certainly had flooding in the city in the past, particularly along the uh, Prairie Run corridor, so we'll be watching that pretty closely. If you see something out there, though, please let us know. If nothing else, we can at least begin to put it on our radar list to um, at least be aware of going forward, and then if there's some improvements to be made, at least we'll, we'll know to to kind of target that area. So so that's one thing. Uh, and the other thing is um, Caitlin and I will be putting together a summary of the uh, strategic planning efforts. So at next council meeting, we should expect to have more of a discussion about that.
That's it. Thank you. Any questions for Mister Hennessy? All right, we're on to the engineers' report. Ms. Odbrowski.
Good evening. I'm fortunate enough that most of my items were covered by Mister Capel, so thank you for putting in the work. Uh, there was just one item I wanted to highlight and get into a little bit more detail on, and that's the Cheshire Road Lift Station upgrade. Again, you're going to have the first reading for that construction contract. We are recommending award for the low bid. Uh, the engineer's estimate was three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Uh, the bid came in at three hundred and eighty-three. There was one other bidder, obviously higher. Um, so we are recommending award. That isn't something that you need to award today, but it's um, it's with you for the first reading. So if there are any questions on that item or anything else in the report, please let me know.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Good update. All right, we're on to resolutions from our third readings. We have a second reading, resolution number twenty twenty-five dot oh seven. A resolution to approve the Delaware Knox Marion Morrow Joint Solid Waste Management District Solid Waste A resolution to approve the Delaware Knox, Marion, Morrow Joint Solid Waste Management District Solid Waste Management Plan Five-Year Update. And this needs passed this evening.
Yeah, we, we are looking for action.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goes. Discussion. Roll call.
Mary St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dreer?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes?
Make a motion on the resolution. Second, second by Mr. Goes. Discussion. Roll call.
Mary St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dreer?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes?
Right. Another second reading, resolution number twenty twenty-five dot oh eight. A resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the cooperative purchase of road salt through the ODOT winter salt purchase contract. Uh, we've got a resolution, also second reading, number twenty twenty-five dot oh nine. A resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for services between Fishel, Downey, Albright, and Ripponoff LLC and the City of Sunbury. And that's for collective bargaining support. No first readings. We're on to ordinances, no third readings. We have a second reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-two. An ordinance extending the existing employment agreement of Daryl P. Hennessy as city administrator for one year and authorizing the mayor to execute any required documents and declaring an emergency. Do not need action. And we have a couple of first readings, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-three. An ordinance establishing a penalty fee for payment from insufficient accounts. And another first reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot one-four. An ordinance awarding the contract to Ryder Co. Inc. for construction related to the Cheshire Road Lift Station project, declaring an emergency. Do we need action on that one? Not yet. Good. Excellent. Excellente, as they say, somewhere. All right, we are on to new and unfinished business and we have a Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, if necessary. I don't think we need this if necessary.
Yeah, we don't need the executive session.
All right, we have one applicant.
We have one applicant.
One qualified, highly qualified applicant, Shannon Stark, correct? I would have been bad if I got that wrong.
You have it right. So as a reminder, uh, uh, Rick Reba has vacated the seat. And, um, so we put out an announcement, probably a month and a half or so, looking for interested applicants. Uh, Ms. Stark has submitted her application. This would be to fill the balance of Mr. Reba's term, which is a two-year term, ending December of twenty twenty-six.
Rick Reba is moving to Florida. Good for him. Um, he said he wished the meetings. Uh, he said he wanted to bring all of Sunbury with him, uh, he wanted to stay in Maryland.
Do you need a motion to approve this?
We do. I'll make that. We've got a motion by Mr. Martin.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Goes. Discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes?
We're gonna stay on this end of the table for moving unfinished business. Mr. Goes.
Do not have any.
Great, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Just want you to be aware that early voting starts next Tuesday for this, the May primary. And, um, it's, there's there's not much on the ballot, so they're expecting very low to, turnout. There's, there's a Democrat ballot because there are two, two Democrats running for clerk of courts in Delaware County. But there's only one person running on the Republican ticket, so they don't need a primary for that. And then there's one state bond issue. And then there's a couple of school issues and the, the, the Delaware County Library has an issue on the ballot. But we're excluded from that because we're part of the Big Walnut Library community. So we're, that issue we won't be voting on, so. It, but it starts next Tuesday and then runs through Election Day, which is May sixth.
I'll be watching the Genoa Township fire. Uh, that's usually a, a bellwether. I think they have a renewal, if I'm not mistaken. Excellent. Thank you, and thanks for your service as always.
Well, you do what you can, you know.
You do more than you can. Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Mr. Capel?
Nothing here.
Mr. Grumney?
Uh, yeah, real quick, on March the twentieth, I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, Delaware, uh, Public Health District, uh, Board Meeting. And, uh, during that meeting, they elected, they had an open seat. Um, they had, I believe, four candidates. And, uh, Mr. Uh, Patrick Blaney, who is the current president, uh, for the Board of Health, was, uh, re-elected for that position. Uh, so I think that's a six-year term, I think. So he'll be on there for quite a while. Um, they, some highlights for the county are, uh, by the health district, I thought, um, were worth reporting out on. Um, unfortunately, from twenty-three to twenty-four, they did see a, a increase in the amount of suicides, uh, from fifteen to twenty-two. Uh, but they have received grant funding, uh, on, on, uh, reducing risk of youth suicide and, uh, harm, uh, self-harm reduction. So that's, that's good to hear. Um, something was very interesting. They gave stats on birth certificates issued and death certificates issued. And so just for an example, two thousand five hundred and eighty-five birth certificates issued. Total births were only two hundred, two thousand two hundred and forty-seven, so wide discrepancy. Some people ask for two birth certificates, so. Same thing with death certificates, four thousand six hundred and three death certificates were issued, fifteen hundred deaths, so. People wanna just make sure they have extra copies, just. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, so, uh,
The birth certificate one concerns me a little bit.
Yeah, I know. I know. The question was asked, why the difference? That was the answer given. Um, five hundred and nine overdoses. Um, so obviously still, uh, um, illicit drugs are still a problem in the community and we shouldn't close a, close our eyes to that. Um, one, a couple of other interesting stats, three hundred and fifty-three animal bite investigations. I thought that was a lot. Um, and then, uh, lastly, four thousand four hundred and five total immunizations and screenings. So people do utilize these services and it's nice that, uh, citizens have a place to go for their health, uh, concerns, so. That's it.
Great. Thank you for attending.
Sure.
Mr. Dreer?
Just got one question here on ordinance number two oh two-five point one-three. The penalty, the penalty fee of fifty dollars. Is that, uh, for being late as well?
No, so that's, that's the item we talked about in the Finance Committee meeting the last time. That's if there are insufficient funds when you draw the, yeah.
Okay.
So somebody gives you a check and it doesn't clear.
It's a return check fee, basically, or A C H. Yeah.
That's it.
All right, great. I had one piece of information. I don't know if any, everybody else knows this. But, um, Grant Colson, everybody knows Grant. Um, I received some great news about Grant Colson, who was our intern last year and obviously like did a great job at Big Walnut High School, but, um, I recommended him for an internship with Troy Balderson. And out of, I think, over a hundred applications, he was one of three, um, interns. The kid's a summer internship in Washington DC with Troy this year.
That's cool.
So very excited to hear that.
That's great.
Let me know earlier this week. I said, I'll buy you a beer, and he said, I'm still twenty. Okay, we'll wait a year. Very, very happy for him. Thank you to all of our staff for mentoring him and molding him. Um, he, I mean, honestly, he was like, thank you so much for the experience last year, which I'm like, right back at you. So, great news. That said, uh, making a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Martin to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Dreer?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper? Seven yeas, we are adjourned.